Jenny, are you ready to record?
All set.
Set and recording.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Burlington Plan and Zoning Commission for July the 26th, 2021. First thing we've got to do is to figure out who all our members are. And let's introduce ourselves. We have old members, new members, and we need to make sure everybody understands or knows who's up here. So everybody got a plan and agenda roster. So let's start with the first seat. I'm Richard Parker. I'm the chairman of the commission right now. Next is John Black. Raise your hand, John. John is the -- well, now you got him as secretary. I thought he was vice chair.
He is vice chair.
He is vice chair. So that needs to be changed, Conrad.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Black is vice chair, not secretary. Seat number three is James Kirkpatrick. James. Seat number four is new to this commission, Lee Rohn. Thank you, Lee, for joining us and putting your name in the bucket. Mark Kennedy is seat number six. Mark, he's EJT member, along with Bill Aplinapp as a member, EJT, ETJ, I'm sorry. Amber is not here tonight, so we'll meet her next time. And our alternative is Patricia Campbell. Thank you for putting yourself up for nomination for this board. I appreciate you being on this commission. So now we've got two seats that are vacant. We do anything about that, Conrad? What you doing about our vacant seats?
We're working on our communications office to solicit for more interest, and we're working on that with our communications office.
Okay. Well, see what you can do. It looks like we have a good supply of members, that we can probably get seven each time here, I guess, I hope. So that's our roster of members. If you would, Conrad, go over item number three, the roles and responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay. For your new members, you have a screen in front of you under the table, that you can look down to see.
The Planning and Zoning Commission is our first time meeting in person. Myself and now you all have been here before the pandemic, so I appreciate your continual efforts to meet remotely, to help us continue business as normal. I'd like to introduce myself, Connor Delmato, the planning manager for the city. I'm joined by my colleagues here, Mr. Mike Nann, our director of planning and transportation, Jamie Lawson, our principal planner for current planning, and Wasim Makati, she's our administrative assistant. We have two other planners that you will eventually get to meet, hopefully sometime soon. Just an introduction, your role and responsibility is really within the legislative context, and I've sent out some training opportunities to learn more from the University of North Carolina School of Government, so thank you all for letting me know your interests. As soon as we're close to that deadline of August 9th, please let me know if you'd like to attend. But other than that, your role is kind of is sat into the Unified Development Ordinance, our most recent code that we have adopted in 2019, and we continue to incrementally update with your support. Thank you very much. This includes comprehensive plan amendments, plan developments, which are particularly rezoning cases, rezonings, which are conventional in nature, from one zone district to another. And then, as you all have seen, a view of text amendments. So we understand that this document is living, and your support helps us keep it living and more adaptable to our community's needs. Rules of procedure, this is an open, public meeting, which just is differentiated from a public hearing, which is heard by city council. So this is an open, public meeting. With your advice and recommendations and support, we've instituted a notification of a 300-foot radius buffer around the properties in question, as well as posting a property with signage, so that our community members driving by can also see projects of interest for the commission. We hold our meetings the fourth Monday of every month, unless otherwise noticed. Sometimes we may cancel a meeting due to lack of items, and we hold it here at 7:00. We're now full in-person meetings transition. Chairman Parker mentioned earlier, we have five city members, regular members, and two extraterritorial jurisdiction members. All members are appointed by council, including our alternates. So we have two city alternates, as well as two ETJ alternates that support the commission. We do need four members for quorum. I understand sometime you may not do you have conflicts and we can't attend a meeting? In that case, I advise you to let the chairman and myself know, so that we can notify one of the alternates and solidify someone to attend, so they can achieve quorum. So this is what kind of the request, staff will brief. We like to have a presentation of items, so that you all can make an informed decision. We like to then invite the applicant an opportunity to speak, they can answer more particular questions that staff cannot be able to, as well as invite members of the public an opportunity to speak on their item, on an item that may be impacting them. The chair would be then, then we go into the decision-making process, which would be a recommendation, and that is where the chair would be entertaining a motion by a commissioner, which is seconded by another commissioner. The chair then conducts a vote on the motion, and the decision is rendered, and in the absence of the chair, the vice chair would then be assuming the responsibility. Again, just to touch on public notifications, this is an example from one of our prior projects. We use Arc Geographic Information Systems, GIS, to help us notify a property within a radius 300 foot. And again, we publish our agendas on our website, as soon as they're available to you. You all must have received the link recently. And we are currently printing the agendas and delivering them to your location, your address, to the public, they can see it on the website. We also send our agendas to our applicants as well. With that, I'm available for any questions you all may have. Any questions, Conrad? Excellent. Thank you very much, and appreciate the service for you all.
All right. Before we get into the meeting of this agenda, I'd like to ask everyone to turn off their electronic devices, to have no phones going off, no pagers, anyone have any pagers?
Hopefully they don't make those.
They don't make them anymore? Okay. So no pagers, but anything electronic, please turn it off, so we don't get interrupted. So thank you, Conrad, for reviewing the roles and responsibilities of the commission and the staff. Item number four on our agenda is to appoint a chair and a vice chair. So we've done this many times before. We'll start off with the chairman of the commission. Do I hear a motion?
I would like to nominate Richard Parker.
Okay. There a second to that?
Second.
Second. All right. Are there any other nominations for chairman of the commission?
Is that her phone?
She comes on my watch, too, as well. Apparently, I've got to take my watch off.
Phones, watches.
And pagers.
Pagers.
We take my watch off.
He's going to take you to the woodshed.
Yeah, you're in trouble.
I move the nomination, Seuss.
All right.
I have a question. Do I need to push the microphone?
No, not really. I don't even know if it works.
It's on.
Yeah. All right. Are you shut down over there, Jane?
As far as I know.
All right. Good. All right, so we have a nomination for Richard Parker for chairman, and a second. Nominations have been closed.
I'd like to nominate John Black.
Wait a minute. Let's vote on chairman first. All in favor of Richard Parker, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Appointing of the vice chair. Do I have a nomination? John Black. John Black, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations for vice chair? Anyone like to close the nomination?
Call question.
Lee calls the question. All in favor of John Black for vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we have Richard Parker and John Black for another year. Now we have the approval of the minutes held on the meeting for May the 24th, 2021. I'm sure everyone read their minutes. Wasi does a nice job of writing our minutes. We thank you for that, Wasi. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor to approve the minutes of May 24th, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Now we get some good stuff. All right. Mr. Ryan Moffett to present a conventional rezoning, to rezone a portion of the property from medium-density residential zoning district to light industrial zoning district. A portion of the property in question is located at the north side of Hanford Road at the terminus of Old Coach Road, and consists of Alamance County tax identification numbers 131-303 and 131-304. Mr. Moffett, tell us what you want to do here.
Thank you, Chairman Parker, of the University of the Commission. My name is Ryan Moffett. I'm a lawyer at the Burn Law Firm here in Burlington, here located across the street at 502 South Lexington Avenue. I'm here representing the Burlington Maqam Masjid. Mr. Shakir Sayed is here on behalf of the Maqam Masjid. They are, Masjid is the owner of the subject property. Alamance County parcel number 131-303 and 131-304. It actually is a single parcel, signed to parcel numbers, because one portion is in the corporate city limit, the other portion is outside the corporate city limit, but it's pending annexation. We are awaiting an annexation plan, and will be submitting permission to pull that remaining balance of property into corporate city limit pursuant to conditional rezoning of another portion of the property. But we're here dealing with 14.24 acres of the 15.54 acre parcel. Again, requesting zoning from medium-density residential to light industrial. The purpose for this application, it has come on the heels of the conditional zoning of the remaining 1.3 acres of this property. In the course of our zoning process for that 1.3 acre additional industrial zoning for cemetery, we communicated with adjoining property owners about that request. Part of what the communications yielded was an interest by those adjoining property owners to have the property retain its potential for future industrial development. And so as we worked with those neighbors, we reached an agreement whereby we would proceed with our request to conditionally rezone the 1.3 acres for use as a cemetery. We would come back after approval of that cemetery zoning and request a rezoning of the remaining 14 and a quarter acres for light industrial use. And so that's why we're here today with this application, is to fulfill our agreement with those neighbors, and to designate the remainder of the Masjid's property for future industrial use. Of course, that's consistent with the future land use map. It's consistent with zoning that's assigned to adjoining properties.
Wait a minute, Mr. Moffett. This says that the adjoining properties are all yellow. They're not consistent with industrial, which is all purple.
It's just a future land use.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Which is purple. So yes, I forgot my colors mixed up there.
Okay.
But what the future land use map assigns
This purple one.
For the area is the purple, which represents anticipated industrial use. And so we will, the Masjid has agreed to begin that process of transitioning the area for industrial use by rezoning it, the remainder of its property, the limit, to light industrial use. And so I hope I made my point to that extent, and if you all have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. That's it. So thank you all for your consideration.
Okay. Have a seat. We might call you back up in a minute. Conrad, you want to give us any enlightenment on this rezoning from the standpoint of the city?
So this property, this proposal is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, and staff is recommending approval using option one and golden red for this project.
Okay. So even though everything around it, and the subject property is all residential, but you're going this way with the land use, with the purple, but even though all this is yellow?
Great. So we're basing our recommendation off of the future land use map, which is showing industrial.
This one?
Correct. And so if this property is zoning, what the rezoning staff plans to do is more in alignment with the future land use plan?
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Moffett from this commission? Now's the time for you new members, if what we did, we hear the information, and then we can ask questions of the city or of the applicant. So if you have a question for Mr. Moffett? Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
Mark Kennedy have a question. As pointed out, yes, that the future land use is industrial. It's currently medium-density residential surrounding. This parcel will be rezoned. Have you spoke to the neighbors adjoining these properties and their concerns? Did anybody raise any concerns? That you have any written documentation or anything to that?
So I guess what brought us to this application was communications with neighbors on a previous zoning request, and they had indicated that they had an interest in seeing this property, their property, the general area, be preserved for future industrial use. So the short answer is yes. In this subsequent application, we did reach out again to those other property owners that weren't necessarily involved in this arrangement, and just let them know that we are coming back with this request. And those other property owners are the more commercial industrial users in the area, so it was Kaiser Roth and Blue Empire. And then Ms. Cheek, who's on the, who's to the east, southeast kind of is residential, but, and we did hear back from her, she just wanted to inquire about, you know, what the situation was, because she knew that we had been here before on the previous. But anyway, we're pretty much here based on communication with the neighbors, so everyone's definitely.
So Mr. Moffett, are you expecting a snowball effect, where all these other properties are going to just turn purple?
Perhaps. I don't know. I wouldn't say we're the first. I mean, you know, Kaiser Roth is purple, Blue Empire is purple, but I, future land use map kind of indicates that that's the expectation or the hope. So if that's what happens, that's what happens.
Okay.
But we're just doing our part to help that along, I guess.
But you're just trying to fill in the blocks.
We're just trying to work with our neighbors.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Rohn?
I've got a question for the Maqam Masjid. Is the cemetery that exists, the little toe holes you've got in this property, is that adequate for your future reuse?
Based on the numbers that we have now and future, and space that grows, it should
As Mr. Moffett said, this was a recent rezoning that we did a couple months ago. I'm not sure when it was, but we rezoned this to the cemetery. They had asked for more spaces, but the city restricted them to 200. So they have 200 spaces right now, which he says is adequate for their needs. Any questions? Mr. Black?
Has staff received any comments?
No, no, sir. Staff did not receive any comments, or I didn't receive any voicemails concerning this either.
Thank you.
Anything, Patricia?
No.
Okay. Any other questions?
Correction, I did receive one voicemail, just asking about it. So that was this evening.
I'm going to have one.
Okay, go ahead, Patricia.
You saying light industrial, what type of business are you talking about?
I would say that this applicant has an immediate plan for industrially developing this property, but whatever the permitted uses that are allowed in light industrial districts is what, you know, what could go there. But this again is more just a attendant to the request for cemetery, and the consultations that led us to this point.
Industrial.
So one of the concessions, it does restrict our client's property and what they can do with it, if they don't have any immediate plans or industrial development. But it does help with what the future land use map provides.
Very much.
To access whatever.
So Patricia, if you'll look on your subsequent pages. Oh, you showed her again. Yeah. So all the places where it says LI, light industrial, and there's a little P there, it means that, like a university is permitted. So you could put a college or a university, a coliseum, you could put a coliseum. So all that's on your table of uses. So yeah, you're welcome, sure. It's very complicated. All right. Any other comments from the city, Mr. Conrad? Mr. Nunn, you have anything? Jamie, you have any?
No, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right. Let's have a motion on this, please.
I make a motion to recommend approval of request to rezonate from medium-density residential to light industrial district, a portion of property in question is located on the north side of Hanford Road, at the terminus of Old Coach Road, and consists of Alamance County tax identification numbers 131-303 and 131-304. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with comprehensive land index, future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive land, calls for this area to have general industrial uses. The request is compatible with adjacent industrial uses. This action is reasonable, and in the public interest of the community, the comprehensive plan calls for industrial uses in the area. Request is compatible with existing, and any land uses in the area.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bill. Any questions about the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right. Second item on the agenda, Mr. Adam Parker, to present a plan development request to rezone the property from medium-density residential zoning district to planned development, PD zoning district. Property is located at 4183 South Turk Street, and is referenced as Alamance County tax identification number 106107, and Guilford County tax identification 229399. Mr. Parker, how are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Good. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Tell us what you've got here.
Yeah, so we are, I have two representatives from the developer with us here, they're going to speak also on my behalf. Yeah, we're trying to go for a plan development rezoning. We have a specific design and plan, thought it would give more details from the beginning, not trying to get a real rezoning. We've got the master plan available. It is a mixed use. Part of it will be my personal office, so it will be retail space on the bottom, Turk Street side, and down the backside, and the upper two levels will be climate-controlled storage.
Climate-controlled storage. You want like self-storage inside?
Yes, climate-controlled, just like on a huge setting on the university. So that's the plan development we're looking for. I will open it up to Valer, see if he has any questions.
Yeah, just slow down a little bit. You're talking too fast. So you want, say this again about the downstairs. You want your personal office and what retail you said?
Four other retail office spaces on the bottom level.
So it's not, it's not selling stuff, but it's office space?
It's, we have multiple uses in there, or it's a strip center or something, you want to call it that, a retail strip center.
A road retail, okay.
Yeah, I'm in a retail strip center now, but there's offices and there's other, we did restrict it, we said no restaurants with drive-throughs or anything like that. We restricted more of a kind of office space.
Okay. Okay.
Answer your question.
So yes, Conrad, this is a straight rezoning, though, right? With no conditions?
No, sir. This is a, this is a planned development.
Okay.
Yeah, it's conditioned.
Okay. So it is conditional?
Yes. There will be, there will be, I'm trying to remember if it was conditions, but it's profferment, profferment?
Proffers.
Proffers to achieve the goal of higher property included plan development. So we can go through those in detail. Part of that is to have, to exceed what the minimum code requirements in the UDO. So for the primary building law, for example, the UDO would require two points of articulation, and we are, they are offering three.
I saw that in the package, yeah.
So that is the product of staff and applicant collaboration to come up with a more defined use for the property, as well as the architectural components and the site plan elements as part of the rezoning. And that would fall under the planned development process.
And this is the second one we've had.
The first one, if you recall, was the St. Mark's Church, not St. Mark's Church Apartments, that were just more of the Alamance Crossing. That was a couple months ago.
Okay, okay.
It was an apartment complex, and there was some specific site plan compelling to that project of connecting that to J.C. Davidson Park, as well as some of the shopping centers. So that's, that's where staff looks at this exact site and kind of deliberates and discusses how he can achieve the goal of a higher development quality product.
St. Mark's has some apartments.
Or that leads us all to an outdoor property for the city of Burlington, to put like a Welcome to Burlington, Burlington, Burlington City sign, that kind of thing, as it is kind of right there, Alamance County, Burlington.
So a gateway sign? Yeah, okay. Okay. And how many storage units would be upstairs?
The design right now is 331 units.
Holy cow. You've got a big elevator, I guess, right?
Industrial elevator on the backside is correct.
Wow. Have you done a market study to see if you need that many?
Be safe was full before it opened.
Yeah, it's a big study, but it's almost at full capacity very quickly.
Yeah.
They, I think, close to 800 units.
Yeah.
I think. But I see it as Turk Street headed, Whitsun and Turk Street is merging to Burlington, and so it's creating a lot of new traffic flow, leading down Turk Street 70, a lot of construction for homes, a heart of some university ground. I'm sure there'll be some on, you know, on Turk Street sometime soon. So just a lot of availability.
So you think you can fill those units?
High, extremely high need.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. It just seems to be so many being built.
This is the only other climate-controlled unit in Burlington.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So the other ones are non-climate-controlled exterior units. This is all in capacity, inside the building. This is all in capacity, inside the building, a lot higher design use. It won't, it won't give the feel of climate of storage. Like I said, my personal office is going to be there, and so I want it to be a, like he said, the UDO go above the UDO design. More of a modern, matching, the watered look where it exits right there, that kind of thing.
Okay. Now, you say they, does somebody else want to speak?
Yeah, if you have any questions, they, they're the smart ones.
Okay. All right.
Any questions for me?
Maybe.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Blair Bittman, with Bob and John Giltz, 600 Carolina Town Road, Robben, Carolina. We've been working with Adam for the last year in helping him develop not just this planned development rezoning, but also the building itself. So we are contractors and design builders, we have that house to design. And so the intent, which is somewhat unlike a lot of rezonings, is this is the specific design that's intended to go on this apartment. So the elevation and the site plan that are included in it actually are the actual final product that is intended at this time to be built, and it actually conditions or narrative, if you will, defines what can be built to this. So you will note that it is a higher level of architectural design, increased landscape, caliber of trees, try to give it a little bit more mature feel at the start. Adam came to us originally with the intent of having this wanting to be in history for somebody that makes him proud, you know, makes it Burlington proud.
Is this two stories or three?
Three stories.
Three stories, so.
And the retail is just on the first floor front.
Okay. And so then the two stories above are all storage?
All storage. The, the back probably, I'll say half, I can't say exactly what it is. First floor is, is, and then two stories above.
Okay. The drawings are nice, but it's kind of difficult to tell with that, being that, above that first floor, that, I'm sure this is not part of the zoning also, but since you have the design, that second and third floor, that's pretty tall. What's, what's that, that type of material there?
It's an ephes material with some faux windows to replicate the first floor windows. With it being storage units, we weren't able to provide actual windows in that because to get the amount of units in that size building, the units are actually against the wall.
Sure.
These are just, those are faux, changing color of the ephes.
So they would be glass type?
They would not be glass. These are up above, if you see where the lighter shades are, right where, those would be a different color ephes. They would not be glass. Now, on the first floor and kind of raising above, you'll see that the glass extends above the, the awnings, gives you a little bit higher threshold, a little bit more feel as the glass going higher. And then you'll also note the tower feature on the floor, which is glass all the way up to the first floor.
Another question about the, I know that, that area, and there are townhomes or whatever behind that, so the backside of that building, it looks like it's just some type of steel, nothing really architectural in the back that those homes would be looking at?
So this is on the corner, and so the, the mirroring side, so both sides that face public streets will, will have that same facade, that same primary look facade. And then on the rear, we're talking about that one side would face, actually faces the cemetery, and then the backside has a change in building facade. There's a, there's actually a jog, if you look in the bottom left-hand corner, so you have a building change shift, plus you have a masonry base that comes around, extends around the corner and through the back.
Now Blair, this bottom left-hand picture, is that the entrance to the storage area where the, that industrial elevator is?
It is the primary customer use to the elevator lobby. Yes, sir, there is also a side entry that would be more from the sales side, the manager's office, which would be a storefront look on Ashley Woods side of the building.
But there would be like an office where you had someone renting the spaces, and is that just during the day, Adam?
Yeah, so typically, access to the building by key fob or code would be from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and then access to the office would be from like 9 to 5, your typical working business hours.
Okay.
It's a very low traffic. If you've ever been by these sites, there's virtually no traffic associated with the actual storage, because people set their stuff and forget it for months and years at a time. So it's not, it's a very low density as far as traffic flow and things like that, which is what also the problem is in there. I have a residential there where I've got apartments up there, we've got people coming in and out a hundred times a day.
Okay, all right.
I also had to point out, your question about the back wall?
Yes.
We specifically angled the building to go away from Ashley Woods Drive and those homes over there. I have a lot of people in Shire that live in that neighborhood, a lot of friends. We did that on purpose. The reason we chose a metal wall back there is because it's a wood-facing wall, and ephes, even brick block, anything like that, is very prone to mold, it will be very quickly going to have direct sign, whereas the metal does not do that. So we selected that for that specific reason, and it made sense from a damage standpoint also, people back there, we try to conceal the garbage containers.
Stand up.
Try to conceal the garbage containers. They did a very good job designing that, and you're going to have trash trucks back there, things like that, on a not ultra consistent basis, but really tried to make that a tertiary wall where it wasn't as visible to the public unless you went into the facility to unload it. It also has extremely large, mature pine trees on the property line separating it from the cemetery. Our goal is to keep those, which basically makes that side of the building not visible except from the cemetery itself, if you're right, on the trees.
I just have to look at that.
For that, on the, on the familiar with the cemetery there or not, but it's a lot of concealment already in place, and if we, if we add, we already got it kind of in the works. Like even down to the point of putting a tree at the corner of the building, we designed it in. Blair, they have more to speak to us after.
Yeah, I don't know that the, I don't know that the master plan is showing the landscape in there, but yeah, that is, that is the property right there that you can see.
So is it visible from the street?
Is what visible?
The building will be visible from the street or not?
Yes, so the building will be basically where the house sits at a similar angle to the backside. The, the precise building will be facing both Church Street and Ashley Woods Drive or curb appeal. And so the building will sit where the house is, and does that answer your question, I'll trip that. Is it visible from the road?
Yeah, because I'm going down that road quite often, so it's just kind of picture it, just the road.
Yeah, so right now it's a, a junkyard. As it stands right now, the guy had a bunch of junk there that lived there previously. And so we've cleared up a lot of that already, but the, the trees will be taken down on the front side, hopefully left on the backside is my desire. Whether or not that's capable with the land design, we don't know yet, but that's our desire to leave it trees.
Okay. Are there any questions over here about this project, Lee? Bill?
I'm looking at the aerial of it. The MDR zoning that is current, doesn't look like you're going to get any houses in that other lot closest to the cemetery. So it makes sense.
We have been in contact with the cemetery that owns that property, and they have given us, I'm sorry, they've given us verbal condition. They're a large corporation. They said they have no design plans for that lot. They said they would probably have no issues if we wanted to pretty it up by taking down some of the trees, planting grass, that kind of thing, just to make it a more desirable area really than the cemetery also. But there is, they have zero desire to develop that for MDR. And again, if you look at the lot, I looked at MDR originally, it is an isolated corner. It is separated from all the other residential by the commercial lot to the west and the cemetery, really there is something, you know, west and east and north. And so it'd be very difficult to ever develop that for a medium-density residential. It would not actually probably even be allowed parking necessary for that in the area.
Okay, is that, I got your, your question. Anything over here, Patricia? Good?
I think we have a question for the city. Have you looked at the traffic flow on, on that road with another commercial type property?
Well, the traffic flows.
With those townhouses right there added recently, and down the road they're adding, in Woodson they're adding, a couple of housing communities.
Yeah, East Development we look at for traffic impact, and this one, as was mentioned, the low, the low traffic impact that would be developed right here, there's no mitigation measures needed or any contingency.
Okay. John, you want to ask what the recommendation the city is?
Well, first I'm going to ask, this storage area will be in operation 24/7?
Yes, sir.
No?
Secure access.
No. The access typically is from 6 o'clock to 10 or 11 o'clock at night. It's not 24/7, just, again, just for security purposes, if you have people around there at 24, at 3 o'clock in the morning.
Okay, so it would definitely be closed, be lit up?
Yes.
24/7, three stories high?
Yes, you can speak more towards that.
So the people living behind here or across the street will be in view of this 24/7, lit up?
I, I think you're, you're speaking of like onsite lighting around the building.
Well, the building itself also, I understand the onsite lighting will have to meet the city guidelines, but I'm just saying a three-story edifice that's lit up, I assume everybody that lives within a half a mile or so will be able to, to look at it all night.
I don't, I don't believe the, at least he's asking whether you would leave the tower, internal tower lights on, so that, that front glass.
Well, I mean the entire building itself. I mean, it's going to be three stories, so we can assume that most people will be able to see it that live around it. Now I'm asking, will they be able to see it at 3 o'clock in the morning?
Again, the, I think you're referring to Ashley Woods kind of behind there, behind the cemeteries, that's what you're referring to.
Or across the street also.
So we want again, the trees that are there on the backside of the property are 60, 70, 80 feet tall. You see kind of the property line there now, taller than the shadows. So that will block a lot. There's already retaining walls that are built around the current commercial property that actually does adjoin these homes. And so, again, safety lighting, yes, but it's not going to be overbearing by any means primarily just facing down to show the base of the building, so that, again, you don't have people just sleeping up against the building, things like that, just like any other property. So, yeah, I would not say overbearing spotlight shining or anything like that. It's, and it's meant to be high-quality, you know, business.
So the people across the street should have no problems with it?
Again, lighting goes up and down the building, has it now?
The three-story building, they shouldn't have a problem with that. Now I'll ask, have you received anything from, from comments?
Yes, so staff received an email from a citizen that was giving to you all that you don't want. Was there anything else you received? None of your comments have been received by staff.
What is your recommendation?
So the technical review committee did approve this plan, and so staff is comfortable with recommending approval of the planned development. Given option two, inconsistent with the comprehensive land use plan, do you determine being separate residential, but approving the project's higher quality goals of the planned development
Are there any other questions from this commission? Do I hear a motion number two?
I've got a question, too. This letter states that they, they have residence at 324 Faith Drive. I see where Faith Drive is. Can you pull up on the GIS which exactly their residence is?
What was that address again?
324 Faith Drive, and it says Gibsonville.
Yeah, that's on the back, that's on the backside of it. The, the line goes through the middle of Ashley Woods, I mean, yeah. So the backside.
So it's, okay, this way. So they're right up against the back of the existing businesses?
Right.
Yeah. It's, it's not the one there by your hand? Where's, where's this?
It's this one right here.
Okay.
324, it looks like it's behind the existing business.
From that view, this doesn't have a leg to stand on.
They would have been noticed of the project.
I'm looking at their argument in here that, that it's already heavily residential, they've got traffic, just probably have more traffic from the additional homes, looks for these in the business.
I, I guess it's probably more of a procedural question, as I live in that general facility, vicinity, close enough to that, that I would be positively or negatively impacted, should I recuse myself from any vote on this?
I'd say no, because it's not a financial position that you're in. You just, it's only a conflict.
If you own it.
If, if it's a, if it's a financial situation with the project.
Okay. All right.
So before I take a motion, are there any comments from anyone in the public? Yes, sir?
Yes, I live straight across 70 from that.
Come on up to the, you have to tell us your name and your address.
B E T T.
Okay.
And I live straight across from Waybridge Towns, okay? And I.
Thank you.
Have talked to a few of our neighbors that who got this in there. Wish they were here, because I think they'd feel a lot better about what's going on. You know, they got concerns. Like, is there going to be a bar in there and all that stuff?
Yeah.
I wish that this, you know, I'm taking it all back to them, so they may have anything to worry about. One thing that kept coming up, and that was, before this pedal came out, we were talking about it badly, and I don't know if this is the group that tells you to get some action made, and that is a traffic light that badly needed at the intersection coming out on 70. When I come out to go west towards Greensboro, I like to have my wife in there with me, so cars are out from that way, how about this way? I think this way, help wait, one more this way, and you know, and then finally, well, if there's another car coming out from Ashley Woods, well, they're going to do what? And everybody, I've got friends golfing over in Ashley Woods, and I just went with two of them last week, and they just talk about, I hope they, somebody realizes the borders of a traffic light that are at 70, and the two coming out of Ashley Woods and coming out of our Waybridge Towns.
Why, I strongly agree with you. That is not, that is not the, this place, but I do strongly agree with you.
We, we have what is called a traffic commission that meets, I'm not sure when they meet, Mr. Nunn?
Fourth Thursday.
The fourth Thursday of the month, write that down, that's the traffic commission.
There's a D O T trouble, like.
Yeah.
The traffic commission on the residential street. We'd be glad to talk to them.
We'd be glad to talk to them about that.
Okay, good. You know, the conference to come back to me just two days ago, if you're going to lose over to Ashley Woods, he said, he said, well, they won't do anything about it until somebody gets killed.
Well, you're lucky to have your force.
Yeah. And so, you know, the thing is, is I think it's best that we make everybody aware, and that way it won't have to be later to say, well.
Yeah. Well, if you would come to the traffic commission, you could at least get your complaint on, in the minutes, the traffic commission, and they can pass it on to Mr. Nun, who is in char, who in contact with North Carolina DOT. And, and that's a, that's an NC DOT highway out there, and they would be responsible for putting up the traffic lights, not the city. But Mr. Nun knows the people that do that.
Thank you. I get it. I don't want to go.
No pressure, Mike.
Again, it's not part of this, it's not part of this meeting, but I made them aware of that two weeks ago, that, you know, information was passed on to NC Department of Transportation. But I'm sure the more persons that call them and make them aware of it, the more concerned that they hear.
Just people want to miss an opportunity to get that, you know, gathering that and accomplish needs.
Well, thank you, Robert, for coming tonight. Appreciate your comment.
Appreciate you letting me.
Sure, yeah, it's a public meeting, yeah.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Robert. Okay. So are there, no more comments, I'll entertain motion number two.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone the medium-density residential to a planned development district properties and located in northeast corner of South Church Street and Ashley Woods Road, addressed as 4183 South Church Street in reference to Alman's County Tax Identification Number 106107 and Guilford County Tax Identification Number 229399. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use map, Section 4 land use of the comprehensive plan in that it calls for the area to have residential uses, the planned zoning commission finds that the request is compatible with the adjacent commercial and residential uses. The action is reasonable and in public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area, the request is compatible with existing zones and land uses in this area.
Is there a second? Are there any questions about the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. Is there any other business to come before this commission?
Is there any corrections to the roster that I've given you? Please let me know. And if you have a sign up for a training session, let me know by August 9th.
Okay. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Salute.
All, anybody in, in favor of adjournment, say aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. All right. We've got Mitch is somewhere. I mean, to sign?
Yeah, I think I can sign that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this one is working.
That's for 2021.
And now goes to.
Yeah.